I'll call this meeting of the planning board to order. Welcome people who are here in person and people who are here remotely. And we'll do a call of members. I'm George Kalimsis and I'm the chair of the board.
Sarah Brown Anson, member.
Jeff Sauer, vice chair.
Vic Michelle Clark.
And we knew that one alternate, Tom Bledsoe, wasn't going to be here. It's possible that Erica Gies and the other alternate and Pierre MacIver are running late, but we'll proceed. So the first, well, I'll just make a comment. I apologize to the board for being absent the last couple of meetings, but obviously the work, you know. Just want to mention that. So the next item is the approval of the minutes from the March 6th meeting.
Oh, take a motion to approve the minutes?
Again, there any discussion after those minutes?
I thought they were accurate.
Hearing none, all in favor. You know, it's like, next item is the approval not required A and R. Jeff, I think you have an announcement to make in regard to this agenda.
Yes, so 61 James Street is my property. So I will not be participating as a planning board member in this conversation, but I can answer questions as a resident if that's what the board would like.
Thank you. Okay, so I hadn't, because I hadn't known until late this afternoon that Eric wouldn't be here. Sometimes he'll give us some explanation, but this looks pretty straightforward.
Can Jeff give us an explanation of what he's trying to do? He's allowed to do that, right, as the owner?
Well, if we're comfortable with that, I just wanted to start prior to that. I was wanting to just look over the plan. It looks like parcel A is being transferred from Campbell property to the Sauer Price properties. That looks like the extent of it. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's all it is, yeah.
And it doesn't affect the frontage? And so it doesn't, and whether any issues from the point of view of the A and R criteria? Any other comment from participating?
Well, it's the large property here, this little corner being transferred to the smaller property at the bottom. Is that what's happening?
Yep.
Okay.
Because it refers to the remaining land of the Campbells of above, indicating they're seeding that that chunk, which is in. I was trying to think of what that shape is called.
Kind of a plenty shape.
I was trapped with it, I don't know. Geometry isn't a requirement for an A and R. Okay, so if there are no other questions or discussion, is there a motion to endorse?
So moved.
Second.
With any further discussion, all in favor? That's three announced. And is there a secondary motion?
I make a motion that the chairman of the planning board has authority to sign the A and R on behalf of the board.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye, we're good. Jeff, you are back. Lean back into the table again.
Thank you.
My eyes again.
So the next, we have a discussion item on potential open meeting law violation. So I'll give some context to this. This is a couple of instances of email communication that amongst the board, that one was on January 13th and one was on February 14th. In both instances, the communication struck me as a potential open meeting law violation. So I flagged the board members of my concern. And then I contacted the attorney general's office and had a communication in both instances with Kerry Kilcoyne, the assistant attorney general with the Division of Open Government. And so the first sentence on January 13th was a situation where a planning board member wasn't going to be able to be at an extra meeting and expressed some opinion about things that were going to be on that agenda. So that was the concern I had. So, and I wanted to read a portion of Attorney Kilcoyne's response. And she said, as you are aware, deliberation does not include the distribution of a meeting agenda, scheduling, or other procedural information. And then she gives an example I thought was helpful because of the nuance it contains. We have said that the following activity is an example of the type of communication the public body members may engage in outside of a properly posted meeting without violating the law. And that is requesting that a topic be added to a meeting agenda so long as the discussion is limited to the request to add the topic to the agenda. Not a statement about why it is important that the topic be addressed by the public body or to advocate support for a certain position with respect to that topic. I just thought that was interesting because you have to be so mindfully neutral. Saying, I like this as an agenda item. I'm not saying an opinion about it, I'm not saying where I land on this, but I just wanted to suggest it as a, as a topic. So that was with regard to that particular instance. And, and just to be clear, they say they can't really offer advice specifically unless there were an open meeting law complaint. And in this, it didn't seem like it made sense to initiate a complaint. It just seemed like it's important for us to note this and then have a follow up and have this discussion. Unfortunately, with my absences, this discussion hasn't been delayed a bit. And then in, in February, it was a somewhat different email situation where a.
The date of that?
I'm sorry, the second one is have occurred on February 14th.
14th, thank you.
And so that was where there had been a planning board meeting the evening before. And then there was an email sent out suggesting some follow up to some of the items and some further thinking about some of the items. Which obviously is, is, you know, in the deliberation in its essence. But to try to avoid, you know, communicating with a quorum of the body, it was sent individually to all board members. And so that again struck me from the trainings I've had as a violation. Because if you have, even if it's that kind of, they call it serial communication. So you're not all in the same email, that counts as deliberation. And in that instance, Attorney Kilcoyne sent three resolved open meeting law complaints that all occurred in the last few years with different kinds of bodies. But they all involved that kind of serial communication, whether by phone or by email. So it just seemed like a good opportunity to flag that. I mean, you know, just, just as far as our collective understanding of open meeting law and its, its requirements of us and the frictions on us. And I also wanted to mention in this context that any emails that we have for a planning board business are public record. And so they can be, you know, sought by people who are interested in seeing public records or something. Like that. So we just wanted to mention that as well. So that's the background of it. Wanted to open it if there's any further discussion.
Yes, I appreciated the information that you provided to me. And it was clear from the information you provided to me that certainly the second instance could be considered a violation. And so that was regrettable and certainly won't, won't happen again. The intent of both emails was basically just to get information before the board member. So that when we had a meeting, we could have a useful meeting because people had time to think about it. So in, in, in that effort, I would recommend everyone in the board. I would, I'd likely be able to send you emails with things I'd like to see on your jet.
Oh, absolutely.
So that's what I'll do from now on with the post. Because at least they'll have, whenever Eric gets the agendas out, maybe it's a week ahead of time. At least we have a week to think about what someone would like to talk about. Because I just like the meetings to be constructive.
Yeah.
You know, because I hate having something brought up at the meeting and then we're supposed to try and discuss it. When we haven't had a chance to think about it.
Yep.
So that's what I would do. And I would recommend all the board to do the same thing. If you have things you want to talk about, let's get them on the agenda. So everyone else has a chance to think about what it is you want to talk about. So that's, so that's how I will address my efforts in the future. And it'll strictly be to you, I won't even include Eric, even though he's not a member. Because you make the decision as to what goes on your agenda. So I don't want to put any pressure on you by copying someone else.
It is okay to include Eric and that's a.
You sure about that?
Yeah, okay. Because he's not, so it wouldn't be a quorum. You would, you, I think at one point were wondering, it was okay to include Jeff as vice chair. And that wouldn't be, because then we have a quorum, three of five, yeah.
The information was very clear and very, very useful. And I appreciate you having taken that step and forwarding that to me. Made me see clearly what was going on and.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate your transparency, Victor. I wasn't naming.
No, 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 that's okay.
It's just about the general principle.
Yeah.
And I just want to acknowledge, I mean, there was no intent here to, you know, hide anything or anything like that. It was to try to move the business of the board forward. And, you know, the open meeting law is very constraining.
Absolutely.
Because it's public business. I mean, I also sit on the, on the co-op board and that's a private. So you can have all kinds of communication in between meetings. And it's much, you know, you can move things along in a very efficient way. And so we, it requires a lot of discipline and, as you're saying, Victor, pre-planning. I mean, another example, this came in just today, this afternoon from Eric. So I was, I was preparing for the meeting, I was looking over the agenda and I was realizing there were, it was something about one of the committees we delegate someone to as well as an announcement I'd wanted to make. And I didn't, I saw staff and board and staff reports wasn't on there. And so I, I emailed Eric, I thought it might've been an oversight or something. He said, well, actually there's a new standard based on the interpretation of the city clerk. So we can't just have that open, you know, reports, agenda item. So they have to be specified ahead of time. So I have a few things now I want to specify for next month with Eric to get on the agenda more clearly. Because then the public can know, oh, this is coming up. I mean, it puts a lot of.
Oh, if you gave a series of reports, you have to delineate what reports are going to be coming.
Yeah, yeah, or, yeah. So that, that does put the onus on us to be proactive and think ahead about things, so.
No, no, that, that was the intent, so I will, I will handle it differently.
Can you have a recurring specific item on the agenda or do you have to actively request it every month?
Yeah, like, could I have training opportunity announcements every month or something?
Interesting.
Because that's what I usually bring for board and staff reports.
Right, right. And I know, I know some other committees have announcements. I mean, you don't always know it about an announcement, you know, a week in advance or something like that. I'll, I'll check, I don't know. But something like trainings or announcement, that's kind of an announcement.
One thing I've seen is agendas that have a bunch of tabled items that are on the list. Usually they just sit there, but we have the opportunity to untable them if they happen to be worth talking about at that particular month. So we just could brainstorm a really long list of the types of things we would like to talk about. Men, I get to most of them or even want to talk about most of them each month, but they'd be on the agenda and accessible for us without having to like.
It's impressive, yeah. Yeah, because we had, for example, we had this item and we have the next item on the agenda for the last month or two. And so we just moved those along just because it didn't make sense to do it at that time. And that's, yeah, I guess that would be a safe way if we know something is going to keep occurring, something like that. And we hope we might get to it. Then at least we've given people a heads up.
Yeah.
Then we might not have a chance to for whatever reason, but. And I did, by the way, I listened to and watched last month's meeting. And I did here at the end, you mentioned a couple of topics, you or so, you can, you can assume those are requested. So, so I registered those and, which just didn't seem it made sense to try to fit them into tonight with the next agenda item being a potentially good one. So expansive one, so, yeah, so that's, it's interesting, yeah. And it's, it's, you know, just trying to be as inclusive of the public as possible for us and anticipating what's coming up. And then also, but it does take mindfulness and preparation. Any further discussion of that?
There's some reason it's asking for a move and a vote on this. There's nothing to move and vote on, is there?
I think, no, because it's also, it's a discussion item.
It's a discussion.
It's not an action item.
I don't know why he's got anything.
Okay, so we'll move on from that. All right. The next item is the planning board's review of two draft chapter updates, land use and natural historic and cultural resources of the 2014 Sustainable Master Plan that have come through the Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee, SGIC, review process. And so I wanted to make one apology to the board regarding this. Because I know that previously had been sent out the tables of the recommended. The recommendations of the table, that had been sent out a month or so ago. And then I said to Eric, oh, could you send back out, you know, the material related to the master plan chapters to have handy? And then he also sent out this 90-page document, background document that I had forgotten to request specifically. Fortunately, he remembered it and he sent it, but this just came to you guys a few days ago. So I'm aware. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. It's a big dump. Artful dump, but a lot of, a lot of information gets sent to you with a lot, not a lot of time for review.
But there's consistency between the table and the, the full document seems.
Yes, yes, they're, they're, yeah, they're integrated. But it's just that that is a lot of the background material that supports, you know, these recommendations. So.
Well, we only need to respond to the ones that are listed as under stakeholder where that's planning, right? Everything else is just informational, so we don't, that's what we're concerned about.
Well, I, I mean, it's, I just wanted to open it up to, so the, and Eric had, because he couldn't be here at the last minute. He did send out a guide and basically affirming the master plan is a planning board document. So technically it's the planning board that approves it. We can request the city council to endorse it, as happened back in 2014. But that's more of an inclusionary thing rather than the require, you know, requirements of the law. And also talking about public engagement around the process. And a lot of that happened around the 2014 master plan. So this is a lot. And, and I also have here the original land use and natural historic resources chapters from 2014. And I don't know if folks have had any chance to look at those for comparison or, I mean, it's, it's a big, when we, when we did this first, it was like a year and a half that we, you know, we, meaning the, there was a, an advisory committee of about 30 people that worked on this for extended period of times with, with a subcommittee for each of the seven chapters. So I just wanted to start this dialogue and figure out, okay, how do we get, how do we wrap our board's head around this? And how do we proceed? And there's one fundamental question that I have that I embarrass to say I don't remember us addressing at the SGIC as we were going through this process. So I'm going to turn to my left and we have two SGIC members here. Sarah's been on for one meeting and Nancy's been on for 10 years. So I'll, I'll turn to Nancy just out of, out of that historic background. But what I was, what I was trying to think is we're coming into this and thinking, okay, this is an update. It has repeatedly been referred to as an update. So I was trying to think, and I don't remember this discussion, this may be I'd forgotten it. If this was supplementing the original chapter or if it was supplanting?
Replacing.
That's your understanding is it was meant to replace the original chapter? Thank you, okay. So, so we would be, as Eric said, it would be up to us to review this, recommend edits if necessary. And then move forward with the process of getting involvement from the public in this. And we'll say too, this process is involved, I think it was mentioned in the cover letter from Mary Chacon, who had been the chair of SGIC, involved in the Conway School students, three students who were involved in this. And then there was a subset of SGIC, you were one, Nancy, Mary, Eric and.
Joan.
Jonah.
Keen.
Keen, Jonah Keen had participated with the students, working on the draft. And then it had come to the full SGIC and we went through it line by line and made some edits. So again, with apologies for this large background document getting to you so recently. Any, you know, thoughts from the, from the board on how to proceed with this task?
I have some thoughts. Well, it's tricky because, you know, it's already been, I, I, I got to read the first, I don't know, third of the whole long 90-page document. So unfortunately I didn't get to review it line by line. But it's tricky because it's officially a planning board document.
Yes.
But the planning board has kind of been hands off in creating it. So we don't want to come in at the last minute and say, oh, wow, what about this goal? You know, this goal shouldn't even be here or, you know, this should be changed, that should be changed in a big picture sense. Like, I don't think that would be an appropriate thing to do necessarily. But I still want us to have like a sense of ownership or like be invested in this because it is very important, like we have a big role in implementing it. So I, I guess I think it would be great to have a little bit more time and have like a more robust discussion about certain points or maybe break it down, like one month we talk about the land use chapter and one month we talk about the, what's the other one?
The natural, natural and historic.
Resources, yeah. So I, I guess I'm not sure that now is the time to just have like that robust of a discussion on it. But I do think like it should be on the agenda. And I did see in Eric's memo, I think we need to post it and have public, do we need to have some kind of public comment on it as well?
I think he was.
That's later on, to fully adopt it.
Yeah, does someone have that Eric's email?
I had it.
Andy, thank you.
I can pull it up.
Can't remember exactly what he said.
Let's see.
It certainly makes sense, I don't know if it's, oh.
Prior to adoption, the planning board should review the updated chapters that were reviewed and revised by the Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee and make any final edits. Then the board should hold a public hearing to present the updated chapters and receive and respond to comments. The following procedures should apply. Distribute information to the public about the master plan and updated change of chapters. Solicit written and oral comments about the updated chapters. The Department of Planning and Development should publish notice of the public hearing at least once each week for two successive weeks prior to the date the hearing in the Greenfield reporter.
Thank you, and that's, that's, it is a public hearing. It's not just public engagement.
Yes.
And because when the first one was approved, I was not in the planning board yet. So I didn't, I didn't remember that. So it was great that Eric flagged that for us. And in response to your comment about planning board members being involved, I know that, as I was saying, it was a year, is it a year and a half? Something like that process of, you know, this advisory committee. And I believe most planning board members were, I know the planning board chair was the chair of the Economic Development Committee and, and several other planning board members served on several of the committees that put these together. So they did have their, you know, fingers in, in the process. So it is coming to it a bit after the fact with people having, you know, gone through it, the students, the SGIC subgroup and then the whole SGIC. And, you know, respecting that work, it just seems like we are responsible for it. And, and it's, it's a, it's not meant to be a quick check off. Yeah, it looks, looks good, they must've done a good job, don't insult them, you know? So obviously taking it a piece at a time and having a chance to actually read this stuff, again with apologies, would be helpful. So other, other thoughts?
It seems like a massive piece of paper here to, and to, I'm afraid it dilutes our efforts. And shouldn't we have prioritized this in some fashion? In other words, it goes from everything from farms to rivers to open spaces to indigenous people to, it's everything. And we should have it to where what's important now? Okay, is it really important for us to worry about the Green River? I'm not saying it's not, but is that really something we should be tackling now or should be worrying more about the cluster development things that we're trying to do and make sure we have the spaces for that and what? That's my concern with this. It's, it's delightful and that's, it certainly looks like it's very thorough, but I don't know how we can possibly attack it and really get things done. It's just so vast and so all over the place. So as far as, you know, what you'd mentioned about not putting our fingers in it, what reminds me of that is what happened with that piece of property. It's a, that's the jewelers on the corner where they wanted to build the clinic, not the clinic, the dispenser. I didn't realize that that, you know, we actually had the authority to tell them to redesign it. So we, when, when Erica said, you know, we should have it to where the marijuana dispensary is on the side street and not on Main Street. So we could have actually said to them, turn it 90 degrees. For us to give you the approval that we want, we want you to turn it 90 degrees. So one store fronts on the side street and the other store fronts on Main Street. And that way the dispensary could have been on a side street. So if the windows are blacked, it wouldn't matter. So I think we need to put our fingers in the things and if we, that we see things that need to be, even though we may have not have written this whole thing. It looks like very few of them have our name on them. I'm just running down the list here and it looks like a lot of it's from other people.
As far as the implementation.
Yeah, but if we, but if we disagree with what's, what's being said here, we should, we should speak up. I mean, I thought the executive summary was very interesting. I see where they recommended or, you know, some of the changes we talked about with the planning board with as far as number of multi-b buildings and a multi-family thing, heights of buildings such as that. So they're recommending the same thing we are. So they understood the need for densifying downtown as much as we can. And even if we go out into the rural areas to put in higher density type housing and get away from the single family. So I was pleased to see that. So I, I don't, I don't know how we attack this. I love, let me just pull up like one example. On the second page, it asks us to identify areas along the Green River to prioritize for acquisition and or protection, including along the discontinued Mead Street. That's planning, I guess it's sustainable greenfield.
Conservation Committee.
I don't know who CONCOM is.
Conservation Commission.
And OSTF?
That the OSTF is the Open Space Task Force.
Task Force.
It is a subcommittee of the Sustainable Greenfield, the old Conservation Committee.
So it sounds like if we were to do that, all four of us would have needed to get together, sit down and come up with a plan. Right, that's, that's what that's.
So when this says planning, it means Eric. Harbor of Planning and Development.
Okay, just means Eric.
I know, it's a little confusing.
Doesn't mean us.
Sometimes it'll say planning board.
Planning board, okay. So let's go above. Develop conservation overlay districts for critical terrestrial habitats considering existing plans such as the fur cog pollinator plant. All right, so how do we do that? How would we on the planning board develop conservation overlay districts?
I think just for a little context, these are supposed to be all over the place. It's a comprehensive plan. They're supposed to be every 10 years and it's supposed to just be a laundry list of things that people think are important at some point. It's not, we're not supposed to get all these done, you know, right away.
But should we prioritize which ones we want to do? So that's what I was trying to say, which one of these is important that we put our attention.
I would say it's not up to us to rule things in or out first, because the purpose is for it to be a community-driven document. Our job is to shepherd the process, not dictate the outcome. However, if it says planning board next to something, we certainly have some say over whether or not we think that's in our purview or do we have an idea of how we'd even do that? I mean, it isn't helpful to have recommendations that don't have a realistic way to get it done or that don't feel important or feel counterproductive. So one thing we could do is evaluate the ones that say planning board and just make sure we agree that we should be part of that conversation. If we think planning board should be parts of other ones, we can add that.
I think it's a good place to start and then to go through the list, identify what we think as a board members and maybe re- even rank them.
And then that is something that's not always part of these is a, this is kind of an objective list. It doesn't tell you which ones anybody thinks are more or less important. We can add a priority indication and then the community, the public can react to that too and see if they agree or not. So we know what we're supposed to do next. And this is kind of the marching orders for the whole city for the next 10 years. And they did a great job in the past 10 years of doing a lot of the things. I mean, most of these are new.
Yeah.
Not previous because all the previous ones are done, right?
There's a lot of them.
But maybe you mean to reconcile it, like you were saying, Sarah, we, because it's so much to go through, we do break it up into a chapter a month and. Is it, is the public hearing have up to two? Like you wouldn't want, or was the idea that we do it all? The whole plan in a single public hearing? Uh, these two are kind of paired.
Good question. I mean, it, it, there needs to be a pub, okay.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think it makes sense to do them both at the same time since they're both updates and it'd probably be more efficient.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And give it, give it in the hall and one in three days to read the materials like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is quick. So I guess, are we, is, is the discussion item today deciding how we're going to do this? Or do we also start doing it? We have people here who can tell us a little bit about where. One person. I think to Victor's point earlier, we might as well take this time to start talking and reserve the right to keep talking about it next time.
Sure.
How would you guys like to?
I, I do have one thing to say just, listen to, and, and concern about.
Do you want to come up here so you get?
Name and address.
Just the concern about prioritizing and that sort of thing.
If you could mention your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nancy Hazard, uh, Sustainable Greenfield Implementation, uh, public member, whatever it's called. Member at large, that's what it's called. Um, so yeah, the last time that the, when the two thousand and fourteen, master plan was published, uh, Eric sat down with it and he pulled out all the things that had to do with the planning board. And he took it upon himself to do some prioritat- prioritization. And I wasn't sitting on the planning board, so I don't know if he brought that to the planning board and worked on that prioritization or not. But that's how the planning board part of it happened. So the, all the things that had to do with zoning or, you know, things that the planning board be involved with, uh, he pulled those out.
And I want to acknowledge, I've been on, I've been the planning board representative to the SGIC for the past ten years, um, since it was, uh, created. And, um, I just, that was that one particular thing I particularly wanted to check with Nancy, but I, cause I couldn't remember the, um, the idea of the, whether this was replacing, um, these three J chapters, so. So, um, need more time to read some things. Um, and, uh, we've talked about the, um, overall, this is a ten year plan. Citywide, so it's broad. It's not just stuff that we have our, our hands in, but we have the hands in the plan and making of this plan. And you were talking about, um, taking it a chunk at a time. I mean, it's two chapters. That's an easy breakdown. And, and you were talking about it was, you know, diving into it immediately to start to run through some things. Do you have a suggestion for, how do you, you're talking about the actual, um, table of?
Yeah, I mean, we could, I'm sure that something dumped out to each of us who might have, well, if, if anyone has any thoughts. I, I, I jumped to the housing section and noticed that the recent housing plan was not referenced. It has lots of recommendations that, that would make sense possibly.
Now, what, what, where are you talking about?
In the big piece.
Are you talking about the ninety page document? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Oh, okay. What page?
Well, it's not mentioned, so all pages.
What did you think if I did not have the most recent housing plan?
Well, it references recent plans where, so I guess on page seven, for example.
Oh, in the summary?
Yeah. Also reviewed more recent planning documents, including the twenty one, the recreation plan of the twenty twenty three downtown. Not sure that's all inclusive of plans that have been done recently. The other comment would just be that, and I know it's a moving target. It's hard to keep up, but some of the zoning related recommendations have already kind of become obsolete because changes have been made. That's not as big of a deal. You can have a, an easy one to check off the list.
And so the plan you're talking about, um, specifically?
Twenty twenty four Greenfield housing plan. Should disclose my firm producer time.
Thank you. Um, and so that is something that occurred, was occurring at the same time as this effort of, uh,
That's true.
Putting this together, so.
Yeah, I also have one other comment that, so the long document you're looking at is the document that the Conway School students made, right? And then the SGIC felt like it was good, but there was no implementation table with it. And there were also some things that the committee felt were missing. And so the implementation, it, every, everything in the implementation table is not necessarily in the Conway document.
Oh, okay.
Yes, okay. I thought that there just was, there's opportunities for more aggressive housing actions. I could be specific about some ideas and then come up with more later.
And that's in the context of land use.
Yeah, so like, uh, land use section two specifically. Read this again.
Where the title is increased housing stock and accessibility.
Right.
Of the units, yeah.
I think that it would make sense to identify specific, like one, one general one would be to prioritize the use of underutilized public property for housing development. Be a little more direct about it. We have some underutilized parcels now that shouldn't get designated for housing, in my opinion. And we could even call them out, or maybe we just call it, you know, do you guys, how specific are you in other cases? I mean, the Hope Street lot, for example, be great to call that out as a, a, a housing site as, as part of this plan.
We go far apartment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Nice apartment building there.
The, um, I know the original, uh, master plan, and that was a bit of a debate with the consultants sometimes, but we did have some quite specific examples of that. I think for the very reason you're talking about, uh, kind of citing something, so kind of per people to think about that, like, wouldn't necessarily happen that way, but that such as kind of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially if it's a, um, you want to leave room for new things. A lot of the things are going to happen in the next ten years. So you don't want to be so specific that you're boxing out
Right.
future eventualities.
So this is a great example of something that you're not critiquing, you know, what is written there, but you think, boy, there's something missing.
Yes.
And you'd want as, and our, uh, our responsibility as planners for the, for the community, you'd want to add, add that in there. So.
And probably a lot more things that we can think of. I mean, a lot of things we've talked about as a board, the things that we would have on that, the very long list of tabled items.
Right, right.
You have to be reflective.
And this is also where, where the open meeting law requirements, um, they get, oh, I forgot to announce about recording. I just thought, um, uh, but, um, you know, when, on, on the, you know, call board, we can have shared documents. We're all editing and suggesting and stuff like that. We can't do that, you know, because that's deliberation outside of public, public meeting.
It does make, it does make doing things much harder when you can't talk except for one day a month.
Yeah, so it's challenging. And, and, you know, there's a thought that, do we want to try to have any additional meetings when we have this large of a task? Um, that's one.
Yeah.
I think it's not an undoable thing. It really is, but particularly have a particular topic we want to tackle. So we can, we can just get it done. I agree with that.
Question for the state or local attorney would be, could we have a live document that we can comment on when we have time that's publicly accessible all the time? It seems like, it was like, it doesn't make sense to ask him if he's recording. We're recording. It's recording right there. Like, there's some things that are just kind of obsolete. So the reason you had to do things in the meeting is because there wasn't a way to do it under public view outside of the meeting. Not because we're only allowed to talk about this for one hour a month. If, if there was a document that maybe we are the only ones that have editorial access to it, but everyone can go look at it whenever they want. And we can just do whatever we need to, as if we were on a private board, but it's publicly accessible. And then we can come together and talk about it verbally once a month, but we can work on it the whole time.
That, that's an intriguing.
Okay, conversation for the Attorney General.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's, if there's any precedence to that. That's an intriguing idea.
Business model, uh, opportunity if nothing else.
A very good thing to get established.
Yeah, and I don't know the technicalities. I mean, it's legal technicalities and also the technical technicalities of how, how it would be managed and how, how, how it would work, but, uh, interesting.
Either way, yeah.
I'm sorry, Jeff.
I'm just gonna, what's the, maybe we could ask your person at the.
Kelly Kilcoyne.
What was her name?
Kelly Kilcoyne. It was the same person that, uh, Tom mentioned he had, uh,
Okay.
spoken with at the training he went to.
Yeah, the Assistant Attorney General for Transparency and Government.
Open, Division of Open Government.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, a couple of minutes ago, George, you said, um, it might be worth having more frequent meetings. And I think it would make sense if we had, you know, like a bigger meeting and maybe a smaller meeting, to just, just discuss this, um, if we're gonna go to like twice a month.
Would that be the bigger meeting or the smaller?
I mean, like, most of the A and Rs and.
Yeah, you have one with the agenda items and you have one that's just on that topic.
Yeah, maybe you can have an extra meeting to discuss.
Right, no, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Well, it depends too what our, uh, agenda is otherwise.
Right.
Um, but, uh, I can check with.
Also seeing working sessions as an alternative, do you guys have those? I mean, where there, there's less specificity. Not that it can be closed door, like there's no action. It's just talking about things.
You can't do that though.
Well, could it be open door, but there's no set agenda? Just an executive working session or something?
I, I don't believe that's
Okay.
under open meeting law. I don't think that's possible. I mean, we're, we're being told we can't talk about, you know, uh, boarding staff reports.
Yeah.
Other than being specified, so.
And I guess it'd be simple to just make the agenda item.
I think it's pretty clear what the agenda item would be. It'd be more discussion on the land use.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that would be a working session, so to speak.
There's, there's gotta be, I know that asynchronous, never ending meetings will be a thing soon. This, what do you think you do with voice too? We can just talk into the meeting at some point. People can always go back and review it.
Think you need to get into a public sector frame of mind.
Along Victor's side, this would be great to be able to be more productive.
More productive, yes, of course, yeah.
But not, but still be under public purview, probably, yeah.
Yeah. So I did actually have to kind of peruse through this thing and I found some interesting stuff on here. I thought was interesting. So like, there's a, we have forty eight percent of the, of the land in Greenfield is open land. Uh, on page fifty, there was a discussion about a couple of dams that were supposed to be removed, but yet there was a, a, then historic people got involved and they overrode the environmental people, so the dams didn't get removed. So I mean, there's, there's some interesting things we got to try and deal with here. Um, on page fifty four, it says sixteen percent of the open spaces protected open space. Um, I know we're a rural community, we're not an urban community, but that's a very large number for open space, percentage of open space in a, in a community. I mean, I remember when we were down in, in previous life, we were happy if we could get five percent.
And where was this?
This is down in Jersey. But, you know, that's a more of an urban area. So, but it was, it was a, so I'm just trying to think of, at what point do we on the planning board weigh the priority of housing and economy over environment and conservation or how we make them match? Because we can shoot ourselves in the foot by locking everything up and not being able to do anything. And that's, that's my concern is, and this is kind of an off the wall question. What do the farms in our community bring into the community? Revenue wise and things like that. We want to preserve, I understand food, I understand farm. I'm not saying there's anything bad about them, but aren't, aren't they taxed differently as well? So they're not paying the same real estate taxes as people who have property and things like that? So do we always protect them or do we think about our future as a community? Say, okay, you know, maybe this farm, which is down by two over there in Colrain and Blain Road. I mean, obviously a semi-commercial area, good place for housing because you got high ninety one there, people can come and go. So do we say at one point, hey, you know, the farm that's sitting here, maybe we should try and rezone? And it becomes, because don't we have to make those sorts of hard decisions? Are possible. Is that part of what we do here?
Well, this, I think having this kind of overarching planning document is a great place to have that kind of discussion.
Right.
Because, um, you know, they cite a lot of public inputs, um, and there was cited in, um, leading up to the two thousand and fourteen plan as well, uh, a lot of public sentiment about preserving, uh, open space.
Yes.
And, um, and it's, you know, when you're, you're referencing the economic impact, I don't know how it's, uh, taxed as compared to other uses. I'm, I'm not familiar with that, to be honest. Um, but there are other factors such as ecological impact, uh, you know, wildlife corridors, et cetera, um, that are other sorts of values. Um, and so that's the very kind of conversation we should be having, you know?
I, I, I understand it. I really do. I understand we need to, to take care of things, but I, when I look around, I think I brought this up. When I look around, there's plenty of trees around here. Um, do we need to protect the trees? I mean, that's, that's the thought that I keep seeing here. Do we expect all of them? Cause I, you know, I want the community to thrive. I'd like it to be a viable, you know, where people do want to come and live and such as that. But if, if we don't have any housing, we don't have any industry, if we don't have any business. I mean, we're not a retirement community, okay? And so what do we do? How do we, how do we manage that? And like I said, the downtown is very limited with regards to spaces. And, you know, we're being thwarted here and there with trying to build higher buildings, you know, or, or dense buildings.
Well, I guess I would say it, it's, it's a lot, it's about balance. And so, um, as far as jobs, we did, um, uh, you know, worked toward the rezoning of the Friendsgating area as industrial, um, with the hope that some, you know, uh, higher paying jobs would be coming in there that's yet to come to fruition. Um, we're trying to, and there are many projects and many, um, zoning changes that have happened.
Yes.
Uh, to have more dense housing rather than say have housing on the farmland. Um, and, you know, open space like that can contribute to a sense of place and the quality of life that does make people want to live here sometimes. So, um, so it's all those kind of factors. It's a very holistic, you know, plan, you know, trying to consider all the, all these different, uh, factors. Um, and, uh, so.
Just a thought, doesn't, it just seems like we've got, uh, we've got to tackle that, that conflict in preserving growing.
I think the place to look is the vision statement at the beginning of each section. That's the purpose of that. I mean, build consensus around just a vision for the community that starts to answer the questions you're talking about. And then you flush out what that means in the story of the place and then in the strategies we want to move forward with over the next decade to execute on that. There's, they have those in here. And do you guys endorse those? How are those, how are the vision statements?
Are you talking about the vision statement on the, on this?
Ninety page document.
Ninety page document.
It's in there too. It's, it was in there too. It's on the table too.
Transferred to this one?
Yeah, there are at the top of.
That's what I thought.
Oh, okay.
They're at the top of the.
Do you guys endorse though? That's not just the students writing something?
Well, we moved it forward.
Maybe move it, you think on the table is something you guys are putting forward, rest of it, make serious.
Well, and again, obviously, it, like you were saying, a master plan is, it's a reflection of what the people in the town want. So it, you know, it's not Sustainable Greenfield's opinion. It's, it's the information that.
Right.
And that's why, like, bringing the Conway students in who don't know us
Right.
is, are perfect because they're, they're listening, they're absorbing that information and they're recording it.
Yeah, and documenting the conversation along the way.
Right, and then moving it forward.
Right.
And, and this, um, in the original, the, um, in each chapter, there was some of the supporting, you know, information. And and this, um in the original, the um, in each chapter, there was some of the supporting, you know, information and uh data and stuff, and then uh got into the plan. So the, there's, it's somewhat different setup here where it's, you know, this is more the background, and this is capturing the specific uh uh strategies and actions and goals, so it's a similar breakdown, but just a little different setup. And and so you were talking about, um like you were saying, Jeff, it's kind of that vision level. Do we, so we should first, you know, maybe say, do we agree with that vision?
Yes.
Is that something we would endorse as as a board? Um or it's some way we'd want to adjust that, something like that, and then we can get down to the specific thing, oh, they they haven't included this more recent housing study, so we want to add that in there as a as a reference point or something.
Yeah, or pull out some recommendations, the parking studies, I'm sure they just can't pick up off the top of their head of the plans and studies that have been done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that's good, because that's, you know, get the latest uh, you know, available resources in there.
Yeah, so the hierarchy is the vision statement for each section, and then the the goal.
Yep.
Or whatever the second-tier items are.
It's goals and strategies.
The goal's the top one, and then strategy, and then actions, so you just.
Implementation action. And then it does um, and indicates whether it's new or from the previous plan, and most of these are are new, but some are from the previous plan. And um also it does list the lead department or stakeholder, and I know when we went through, and Eric and I went through at one point, um for the um uh original master plan, we went through all of those and they had planned word, and we adjusted, we tweaked it. I mean, it's not written in stone, and we realized, oh, this group should be included in that, or something like that, so. Um it's a living document, um and we do have this, you know, implementation committee to rely on to keep it, keep it alive for. Well, it's good to get an overview of of the document and of the process. One question I'll ask Nancy, it's it's premature, but just, you know, I was trying to remember, wasn't it Mary's um introductory letter sending, you know, the this table over, but um uh as SGIC chair, but um the, had the SGIC said, as far as the public engagement, it would be willing to partner with the plan, but I think that was something, I did remember that correctly. Okay, thank you.
So we could have a joint public hearing?
Not the public hearing, the public hearing would be for the board, but I'm talking about in in further, because that's the official thing we have to have, but then um I know we had other um uh events to help publicize it, promote it, you know, inform the public about it, so. And that's that fits into SGIC's, you know, uh purpose, so. But that's a waiting point where approval.
In twenty fourteen, was the Sustainable Master Plan printed and distributed at all, or was it only an online document?
There were a number of copies that were printed. I don't know how many people advantage of them, and it was certainly at the library and other places that are public.
So would the twenty twenty-four plan be redistributed in a similar way?
I assume that makes sense.
Because it might require some staff time or someone to reformat it and get it printed and everything.
And I don't think.
Mary was writing a story map about it, and I don't know what the status of that is, but I think.
You want to say what that is?
Um well, my understanding of what a story map is, you see, Jeff, you could probably describe it better than me. Why don't you talk about it?
It's a website dashboard that is, you're supposed to kind of scroll through it, and you, it tells the story of the plan, and there's a lot of maps built into it because it's a.
It's more approachable than that table, and it has, it would have pictures and that sort of thing in it.
Yeah.
Um so, and her thinking was for doing that was to communicate better with the public.
Okay.
To have a way of communicating to public.
So maybe.
To that table.
Okay, so maybe it would replace the printed-out copies or?
I think it's just one way to inform.
It's just another, an addition, okay.
Yeah, and Mary did say, she, I mean, she left the the committee, but she did say she would be happy to help.
Continue on that.
Continue on that, and the decision was to wait till the plan board had endorsed the the document before that would be used, because that would be.
But it, but it is, it's a little tricky um because we have the document from the Conway School, right? And then you know, we took it sort of to another level by creating that table, and we did add things to it. So when you say, what would we distribute, um I'm thinking the story map that she, that Mary's writing and this table, but not the Conway piece.
Is your, is your sense, um Nancy, and I ask you because you were on that subgroup of the SGIC that works so intimately with students, was your sense that there are things, obviously there are things were added, and a, a, uh, an approach to implementation that was more, you know, tangible than than the narrative, but um did you sense there were things in here that contradicted this? Or is that a concern you had?
Um I just remember that uh Mary Chiklin, that who was the chair, felt like it it was um it didn't really the end product was a little loosey-goosey, and it was a little, and there were things that were missing.
Yeah, that's it. So it's not, it's not like this would contradict this, it's more than this, this was needed to actually have it be a plan.
That's probably.
Acted on, okay. So this is a helpful background information, that could be available to people online in libraries, something like that. I mean, I think this plan wasn't for a while available easily, at least on the website, uh as I recall, trying to find it sometimes.
There's certainly updates and things, or we never had a good system to communicate what was accomplished. We tried a number of things, but too difficult.
So um what would people like to do this evening? We're getting this overview, kind of a sense of how we'd like to proceed. Um we want to uh start to dive in a little bit, we want to make out a schedule of how, what we'd want to do in the next meeting, you know, what what's a reasonable chunk, it's like you say, chapters, that's two, that's a large, I mean.
And I really, now that it would be good to focus on the goals as well, yeah.
Yes, right, so the goals breaks down each chapter, so there's.
Yeah.
For um the uh natural, historic, cultural, there are eight goals.
Mm-hmm.
Um and land use, there are five goals, so, uh and and it varies with how many um strategies and how even implementation actions are on each one. So we could say, let's try to do this chunk at the next meeting and be prepared to um endorse or alter, starting, of course, would be the vision statement that's at the top of the section. What were one of the vision statements right now, or how would people want to proceed?
Um well, I think it would be helpful for me to have, you know, like homework that's more specific instead of just like.
Read everything?
Yeah, yeah, so uh I would be open to doing, starting with, is the first one land use?
Uh it isn't, but.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, we can go wherever, what order we want.
The resources one.
Yep, natural, historic, and cultural.
I would be open to discussing this chapter and all of the goals related to that and the vision statement.
Okay, so all eight, eight uh goals.
I mean, is that too much for one meeting?
Well, we don't know, I mean.
Well, we could figure it out, yeah.
It's gonna start or something. Yeah, if we can't get through them all, I mean, they're too for too much, and then we have to bump it to the next meeting.
I think that makes sense, so, and the, the whole, and and the implementation actions?
Yes.
But just the, in a, in a C section?
Yes, and I think we're we're talking about the entirety of it, and if we think the the lead department stakeholders are accurate.
Yeah.
I assume a lot of us will say, looks good.
Mm-hmm.
Um because it's been vetted at different layers. Um and some of who might say, oh, to tweak this, some we might disagree with, and some might say, oh, this is missing. So that was something we're aware of, so.
And there's more of a discussion about like what the goals are based on in the chapters. I think that's what kind of makes it tricky is because like the chapter itself presents like the research that was done, and, you know, more of the history of the context, and then the goals do seem a little bit, you know, you need, you need one with the other.
Yes, the context.
Yeah.
Yep, so reading through the portion of, relevant portion of this.
Yeah.
Is important too, yeah. I appreciate you got pretty far in when you're skimming, but.
Here's another funny little tidbit. You know there's five hundred and ninety-four pieces of property on the Historic Register in this town?
Hmm, wow, that's impressive.
According to that report, that ninety page, five hundred and ninety-four properties on the Historic Register.
I do remember.
The townsman around for a while.
There was also, I remember a tidbit from the original, I was about the number of historic trees, do you remember that? There was, there was certain I can't remember what it was, or what the, what what constituted that, what the age was of the tree or something. Okay.
Okay, so this is homework, and so we're gonna go back to between now and the next meeting, we're gonna look at the H, NHC section, make our comments on what it is and bring that to the.
Yep, and try to look at the relevance background in this report as well. Sound good, Jeff?
Yeah, Nancy, is there anything in that section that you want us to?
No, I I like what you, Sarah, what you're saying, I think you know, if you look at the vision, you look at the goals, and that may, that brings it down to a manageable thing to think about. And then if you have time to look at all the details under the goals, great, but if you don't get there, but at least get the big, that big picture.
Yeah.
That's, that's true, you start with the vision at the top, and then you go through the left-hand column to make sure that, yeah.
I mean, just the goals, I mean, if you get to the strategy.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Only eight.
That's the, yeah.
Goals, so.
Yep.
What do you think of those? And then, then you might ask yourself, well, what is it, if if you like it or don't like it, whatever, what are the strategies that they're thinking about to implement it, and think about it on that level? And when we spent so much time with it, we were looking at the implementation stra, the details of the implementation strategy, which um maybe you want to get to, and maybe you don't. And and those, again, because it's a living document, those things can change, those are fluid. Um but the goal, the goals are not so fluid, I mean, they're more clear and.
Yeah, and I think in the chapters themselves, it talks about like why those are the goals. Yeah.
Justification in background.
Yeah.
For, yeah. Does that seem sufficient at this point for a reasonable approach?
Moving forward, yeah.
I'm just gonna turn to my left into the screen to invite if any members of public handy um wanted to offer any comment on this process, reviewing these chapters.
See, none.
Hi, yes.
Hey there.
Patty's showing up.
Hello, um my name is Patty, I live in Precinct One, and.
You just froze, Patty.
Yeah, I better, I'm on open space task force.
We we couldn't hear the first line.
Maybe turn off your image so that we can, you could talk more easily. Or a little less interference.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, um I'm. All right, there's a delay.
We lost her.
Is she gonna come back in?
That's my guess.
Oh, she's gonna try. She's obviously out about her condition.
Might try to log back in.
So good.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have to do anything, just log in. I thought I had to push an invite, but they they just come in.
Okay.
Anything you want to say?
Okay, very good.
One helpful reminder would be, these are not the only two sections of the plan. And blanking on, every state has their own. There's other, like, transportation is another one, right? I mean, we're gonna get.
Seven chapters.
Yeah, and those are all in play now, we're just kind of doing them in chunks, or some of those can, or some of those not being updated.
So because we're, we're, one of the announcements I was gonna make is apropos of this topic, so I can say it, is that the um, the uh um discussion was had at the start of the um, or um, for the uh SGIC about what's should be thinking about what's the next chapter to consider.
Okay.
Trying to, and the consensus of the uh committee was economic development.
Okay.
And uh so wanna run that by the planning board and make sure the planning board uh doesn't object to that being a focus. In fact, we had, looking into preliminary options for that, and actually today met with a consultant from UMass and um uh a uh, some people he uh consults with and uh were ex-experts, and we uh had a meeting with them, very preliminary, uh there's no funding for this at this point. So we ended up had, had the opportunity with the Conway Schools and some funding and stuff, and an opportunity with them, but um so this was just a, ended a bit of a walking tour of the downtown, so, so that was a thought that economic development, so taking these a bit at a time. Um so.
Just to make ourselves clear, so far, these are the only two sections that have been updated and reviewed. Then you take it to the next section, would be economic development.
Correct.
I'm actually, I'm a general public person, I guess I'd like to say, say something about it.
Yeah, please.
So so the issue is that um the money to update the entire master plan, as you can imagine, doesn't exist, and then SGIC had the opportunity last year that this Conway School came and expressed an interest in working with us and working on two cha, I mean, those two chapters, and so.
And those two chapters matched kind of their expertise.
That's correct, yeah, that's right. And then, uh and then the question is, well, okay, so um do we want it, that seemed to work really well, we liked how that worked, and actually it was Wayne Fiden, who you, I'm sure you know, who approached uh the city about doing another chapter with us.
Right.
And then met with Amy Kailene, and she, you know, she put forward the idea of economic development, the committee uh talked about that as a possibility, and then forgotten the name of the program, I'm sure you're familiar with, it used to be SSTAT, and now it's got a different name, it's been the AIA's been doing this for twenty years or something, um where they come in and and work with the community very intensely for three days, and bring ideas from the, and listen to people, bring in ideas, and so that's what we're, that's what we met, the people we met with today, and and it's just, it's like, well, how can, because the master plan was written in twenty fourteen, so time passes, and we don't have the money to do the whole thing at once.
And Wayne Fiden was a longtime planner from North Hampton, and he's now a part of this UMass program, so it'd be UMass students who would be involved in this as well. They, and they'd be the ones carrying through the work, if it works out to do it, and these other people, these people came from DC, and they volunteer their time, they get reimbursed for travel, I think, or something like that, but they volunteer their time, and they've done that. And no, there were, actually, they came today because they were headed to several communities in Vermont, they were gonna be doing projects for, and they, so it was feasible to swim by, just to.
Patty's back.
Hey Patty, yes.
You're muted.
Okay. Uh try again, I'm Patty O'Neil, I live in Precinct One, and I'm on the Open Space Task Force, and also a Conway graduate, and and I've been following, or trying to follow this um update um for, since it started, and I'm really glad to hear that there is a public hearing um planned for community feedback and um, gosh, so much. gosh, so much I wanna comment on. Yeah, about the, uh, I, I guess I'll say, um, I would be really interested to see the notes, um, the discussion, if we can, um, of like how the, the development of the recommendations, um, into that master plan came to be, just because um, I'm aware of at least one of them that was recommending thinking of, um, something along the lines of watersheds rather than municipal lines. And I thought that was a really um, forward-thinking way of thinking about planning and that didn't make it into the original recommendations, I was told. Um, but I think that ideas like that, maybe if they can't be done through the what the city can do, I mean, even with the example of the open meeting law, like there's a lot of limitations to what the city can do that just being able to hear some of these ideas, um, could be really helpful for the community to be involved in working on. Um, so I think the more ideas that we can have a better um, into the development of this living document and, um, I'm really interested to find out um, about this like publicly edit, edit, editable document that the community can perhaps work on as well.
Judge of ideas like that idea, so it might not.
Well, I, I think that one thing I would add to the master plan, like, is the ability for the community to give feedback, um, like regular feedback, like the ability for the government to be able to process feedback is an, a pretty important part of sustainable design and development, I would argue. So definitely communications, um, is something that maybe Conway didn't have on there, but and maybe this is not for this section, but I, I think it, it definitely could use or it could work for it. And, uh, about the local economy, um, so we're, we're talking in the open space task force group. Um, we're mapping out conservation areas and we're thinking of our field, um, the housing, um, the most valuable conservation land and what conservation looks like in different areas of the town and also what kinds of economic opportunities exist that could also be supporting ecosystems. Like, it's definitely like a, a, a new and, well, it's not new, it's actually an indigenous way of, um, you know, kind of paying attention to the land, uh, and I think there are a lot of opportunities there for us to look into and, um, I want to make sure that that's something that we can consider, um, in the community, like we have these um, unique ecosystems, these natural communities and those, like there's agro forestry, um, there had been climate smart funding, um, that was from, uh, funding from the, from the USDA that was cut that would have funded projects like these. So this will kind of come down to maybe how municipalities can enact them or how they can just organize, maybe like help get this information out to the community to organize themselves about how to do this. And it's a really exciting thing to think about, like how we can source more local food and local materials and support our ecosystems at the same time. So, um, like looking at the way that conservation, planning and energy development and housing all intersect and how we're planning that land use, like that's, that's a huge conversation. And I hope that we have a lot of opportunities to, um, be involved in giving feedback to this. With an open meeting law. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Patty. Before calling on Jimmy, I just wanted to, uh, give a little context when you mentioned the open space task force that I had referenced earlier. So the original master plan had called for an open space committee and there had been attempts to get that started and I, I think several mayors just didn't prioritize starting such a committee, so the, um, SGIC ended up creating a subcommittee, uh, to fulfill that purpose. That's the open space task force, so it's a certain number of, uh, folks, uh, from the SGIC, plus some members of the public, like I, who serve on that, so. Just wanna give a context of that. Thank you for your service, Patty, and your comments.
I want a comment on.
Yeah.
Patty's comments, I mean, it sometimes these, when, when you're doing all the sections at once anyway, on a master plan, you might have an overarching vision statement or statements. That can help, I think, Patty, so what you're talking about is just making sure that we have intelligent linkages and integrations between these different sections, because nothing is independent, everything else at a certain level. So if you, if you just think about them in terms of their own silo, you might accidentally create conflict with another section. So is that? Nancy, something, I mean, it's hard to do when you work in a couple of chapters at a time, but maybe what was the, was, was there an overarching vision statement in the previous one that maybe we say still holds or maybe wants to be refreshed as a kind of the broadest context to then work.
It'd be great if you guys looked at it. Yeah, I, I haven't looked at it recently, so I can't, I don't have a comment on it, but I hope that it's, uh, I hope it's something we all still love, but we'll see.
Yeah, that'd be good for us to
Yeah.
Check for the next time. It's the, it's the highest level, yeah. Great. Jimmy, thanks for your patience.
Yes, I just wanted to point out, um, something about the agenda. Um, there's not a, a section on the agenda for public comment. I am so glad and thankful that you added it, but it's not on the agenda. And I know these things seem trivial and open meeting law seems trivial. But what if somebody wanted to come in and comment on this meeting, but they didn't see it on the, the agenda, so they're like, I can't even speak. So now I'm not even gonna go to the meeting. Like, there's little things, there's only a couple of us in the room sometimes, but i- i- this is our government, like i- it should be ruled like a government, not like, I see so much nonchalantness. And that's why we complain, because there's, y- you know, we wanna participate and we want it to be like transparent. I hear everybody saying transparent and then no one wants to be transparent. It, it's just really, it, it, it's crazy. And, um, one other thing on this, um, the master plan, I remember five years ago, George going into meetings where you were talking about the master plan, and I think as the new board members come in, that, uh, this is they need to have a little more understanding about why we have a master plan and that it's required by the state and it, i- i- it's like more than just this document you throw around and change and whatnot. It's a living document, like Patty just said. This is something we're trying to work towards goals, not just constantly changing it. If you're constantly changing this document, then how can you have any long-term goals for the future? And that's about it. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you for both the procedural and the content comments, Jimmy.
A comment on his comment, because the difference between a open meeting, a public meeting, this is an open meeting and that people can view it.
Yep.
And it's up to your discretion if you wanna ask someone to comment. We could have had the whole meeting without asking anybody to say anything.
Yeah, and I think, I think, um, it, it's correct. Uh, it's, it's the chair's discretion. It, it's not a public hearing. But, uh, um, I, I think, um, both he's, he's talking about it's, it's hard to, uh, it'd be helpful at least to know if there's gonna be an opportunity, and we haven't always used that discretion. And I do, um, uh, I've noted in the, um, hybrid meetings, uh, part of the code, it does talk about, um, that, uh, notices of public meetings, um, should specify whether public comment will be taken. Uh, and if it is taken, include how to offer public comment. So it's interesting because we've, we've had it be, you know, provisional based on if it seemed like, you know, it made sense, uh, or, or was helpful in the moment, but, uh, and I know the planning board has, uh, I followed the precedent of the former longtime, uh, chair, Charles Roberts, of being quite flexible, um, about operating opportunity for public comment, but uh, I appreciate the point that it would be helpful to know in advance if it's likely or we can expect there's gonna be a chance to come.
It sounds like another agenda in which.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Maybe allow it at the discretion of the chair, like it always has been, and you've always let people talk.
And that could be part of the announcement or something like that, but, but, yeah. So that, that sounds like another thing to put on.
Sounds like a.
Agenda, yeah.
I just want to clarify that we're not not violating anything, we're not doing anything wrong.
Right.
If we don't ask for public comment, because it's not addressed, it's not identified as a public meeting where comment is going to be asked for.
I'm gonna call on Patty, you had another comment to make, and then Jimmy again.
I am upset to see that.
Oh, okay. I just thought the yellow hand was up. Thank you.
Hi, I just, I just remind, was reminded by something Jimmy said about the, um, agenda, um. I was hoping to find, um, like a link or something that I could look to see exactly what was going to be discussed. Um, about the update, and I guess it's just helpful to know that it would, it's like replacing the whole thing and, and I do have a copy of that, um, draft, but I don't know where the public can find it. I specifically asked for it. Um, and.
You talking about the draft of the two chapters?
Um, y- yeah, the, the entire Conway project and, and anything else, um, relevant for the community to be able to like follow along with this. And like, I think the, the public hearing would be great, but making sure that the public has the ability to also have informed discussion and feedback.
Of course.
It's something, like, can we make sure to have those, uh, links to the information available somewhere before we're meeting about them?
Absolutely. I know, we, we've talked about that and.
That's it. Think if you go to the, the, the city webpage or you go to the planning board web piece of it, there are, um, how do I wanna put this? There's instructions right on the top of the planning board, things is how to find. And it'll tell you where to find any document that's been provided for the planning board to discuss at a meeting is there. So if Eric had provided this ninety-page document as part of our meeting to discuss, it's there. So if you go, go to the other website and look for under the planning board, there should be a how-to, which we created so that people could find the documents.
This is, this is in response to previous.
Right.
Okay.
So just say, why don't you see if you can locate it and perhaps you can communicate with Eric or, or George as to whether you're able to find that, let me know if it worked. What?
I don't find it.
Did you find the shorter, should be a how-to?
I don't see a how-to. I can walk on a big paper.
I'm curious how hard it would be, like, if you're in the calendar and you're on the agenda, if there could be a link on the agenda to the document that you're gonna be talking about. Then people don't have to go looking for it. Is that possible or not?
There was a problem set.
Seems like a.
If you're not gonna keep looking to.
Some cities have better systems, so something exists that could be subscribed to and I, I think that if someone has to go in and like upload something and paste a URL, it's, it's never gonna.
But if it's already updated, it's already on the planning board website, then all you need to do in the, in the agenda would be to point to that.
To just to the website, yeah.
That, I mean, I don't see, well, I don't know what's possible.
I've seen.
The, with the ca- calendar of announcements.
I mean, it's more of maybe a suggestion to the, the city council, you know, we get so, we get derailed all the time by this type of thing, like someone couldn't find a file and you know, we, we don't have visibility on everyone's experience of the website and it makes, because then people start calling things into question. Maybe there's a more robust option out there. Where like someone just has to drag and drop something and it goes to all the places it's supposed to and it's already compliant with all the open meeting things. I, I see this. I look at agendas all the time, cities all over the country, and I, I see pretty good systems. I haven't written down what they were, maybe I should, I'll, I'll keep better.
Now Matt posts on the calendar, right? Matt Conway? He, he's the person who posts things?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or maybe Eric does in your case, I don't know. But for some of the other committees that I'm on, uh, it, we rely on Matt to do that.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, well, but whoever posts to that, find out, yeah, if they can just add a link to it.
So Patty, I'll say your, your point is well-taken and, uh, it has been something we're trying to address. I don't know in this instance, um, if the, um, the table of, uh, goals and strategies um, got added, that had been disseminated to the board earlier. So I would think that would be, the other, um, ninety-page document didn't come to the planning board till Monday, so it's possible it fell through the cracks for getting included there. So I'll check with Eric about those two, these two documents, specifically the, the public having access to the documents is obviously vital to have informed, public and informed participation. Uh, and then it's, it's making the best intention to get those available somehow and then trying to make it as facile as possible. How people can get it to it with the least number of steps.
Well, I don't see your thing here. You're not going through my phone. It should have been, I know that was there because Pete used it the last time at the meeting.
Sorry, I also just add, I hope that the, the open space task force might be able to weigh in on the discussion too, if there's interest. I just sent an email to them. I'm not too detailed, but.
Nice. Uh, Stephanie, I see a hand, your hand, electronic hand up.
Uh, Stephanie DuKloos, uh, Chatham Street. I would like to, uh, get some clarification, um, on the new law on Ecode three sixty under hybrid meetings. Uh, section six and seven, that does identify that the planning board be hybrid. And then if you go to section seven, it says that any of those boards above that were listed above um, shall provide a time for public comment. So if that is not, um, known to anybody on the board, maybe clarification from the city clerk's office, uh, regarding that new law that was just passed in December. Um, it was effective immediately, so I just want to caution that you may actually be in fact of a, of our, um, against our charter, whether or not that holds weight with the state, that's different, but we did just pass a lot at city council level, um, regarding hybrid participation in meetings. Thank you.
Yeah, I was, I was, I have right here, Stephanie, I was citing it, and actually, it's gonna be something I was gonna put on the uh, agenda for our next meeting to review, to make sure we're in compliance with it. So thank you for citing it as well. Okay, um, no other, and but thank you, uh, folks, uh, glad to have you attending, glad to have you, uh, weigh in. Um, and so, um, sounds like we have a plan for the next meeting. I'll talk to Eric about what, what we're, we're at with, uh, other business we have to attend to, so how much of the meeting we can devote to this, because it sounds like we'd like to put substantial time and at that time we could decide if we need to schedule a second small meeting, isn't it? So, uh, okay, so we have our homework and, uh, should we go on to set the next meeting date? Would be, what's the first Thursday?
That would be May first.
Okay, May day.
Eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Eight P M.
Also, um.
Yes, we're always at six, always here now.
On Tuesday, April eighth, there's what is it?
Joint public hearing.
Joint public hearing.
Yes, with the, um, you see with the EDC, yeah.
What, remind me of the location?
It's Zion.
Oh, John.
I get a church.
Well, that's, that's gone.
Is it at John's on?
I haven't, I haven't my calendar where it is.
And I'm assuming that we'll get an agenda for that?
Yes, I can check with Eric.
Been forty-eight hours, which is coming up.
Yes. Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that next, uh, and that's, I can't remember exactly, because I haven't been here last month exactly what is being considered, but it's about some other zoning uh, changes.
Next week.
Yeah, there was some things that were commented on last month, but they weren't actually coming up till, it's, it's so confusing for people.
Multiple, there was.
So many.
And then something else, and I forget which one of which. So one of them is on Tuesday.
Yeah, this has been, this recent months has been the richest or most dense, whatever you wanna call it for zoning proposals. And it unfortunately gets confusing for people, because they, not sure which one they're coming on, understand. Because they, not sure which one they're coming on, understandably, but um.
Citizen's petition is next week.
Okay.
Along with any other ones?
Those were last time, I think. So I guess I'll.
Yeah.
We'll find out what's gonna be agenda.
Yeah, right, and location, and we'll get there.
Okay.
Okay. Before you get into that, we should.
I might, I'm gonna be traveling on the thirtieth and the first, might be back in time in person, or maybe I'll be driving back from the airport or something. When we get into this process, we're about to have, or we're going through chapters and what's the appropriate way? Let's say I can participate in my car, you know, on on the phone, but I had a bunch of notes that I wanted to share. We could send that to you and Eric maybe whenever, and then you could distribute those during the meeting.
Interesting.
I don't know.
I think I'd send them to Eric.
I don't know if that's like notes.
Like, just.
I understand your point, so you wouldn't be able to read off of them.
List of comments, things, losing my suggestions or thoughts.
And it's not that you wouldn't be present, you just wouldn't be able to read them.
Most likely, yeah.
Right.
What if I'm not present, or if other board members can't?
That's what I tried to first. That's all I got in trouble.
It'd be deliberation.
But if you you send it just to
Eric.
Not to quorum, and it isn't, so what ChatGPT suggested about the you can't exchanging notes, working on the same document is tantamount to deliberation, because you're seeing what each other is doing.
Yeah, yes.
But if it's not visible to anyone else on the board until the meeting.
To quorum.
To quorum, and it's only kind of shared at that time.
Yep.
It it would be more okay.
You know, I think, I mean, especially that would be okay if it was shared. It it's a tool for you to have a reminder of your points when you can't be reading.
Yeah.
And so uh perhaps the cleanest way to do it would be you just send it to Eric.
Yeah.
And then Eric would say, okay, Jeff, are you ready for me to review the points you sent to me since you can't read right now? And you can affirm these are your words and your points.
I got it. Okay.
I don't think if you were not able to participate at all, that you could do it. That you could do it.
That makes sense. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You couldn't, you don't think you could send it just to Eric to have him incorporate as part of the meeting?
I I think it would have to be Jeff giving the the.
Really?
Um, I think so. Yeah, I don't think you can in absentia participate in deliberation.
I see, so sharing notes is like deliberating, it's not.
Yeah.
Oh, they can't be read to the.
It's like you're giving an opinion on the item, the agenda item.
Right.
But it's not in the meeting, so that's not allowed. And that's my understanding.
No, it should be issued to the public and the board only in the meeting, but if the person's not there.
I I don't think that you can participate in absentia.
Okay, makes sense.
But you can be remote, and then you want to send that to Eric to reference.
Because I can't.
Helped you as a memory, as a memory aid.
Real time.
Yeah, right.
A real time.
Or you can, you know.
Or fall over.
Risk risk uh getting pulled over.
Gotta make sure I don't violate anything with with my plans there. Okay, thank you.
No, thanks for the heads up, but that that seems like a reasonable, you know, creative strategy. Okay, and I guess when we get the agenda, we'll get the location for the next Tuesdays meeting.
But my first meeting will be here at six P M.
Yes, our meetings are always gonna be here, always at six P M. Um, we've gone back and forth. They used to be at seven. Years they started seventh. This is awful. Um, okay, so uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Seconded.
On paper, uh, we are a joint.
Close the meeting?
We're done.
I say, guys, close the meeting.
Yes. Oh, yes, please. Thank you. Take care. Thank you. Goodbye. Good to see you.
Thank you, George.